All right, we will go ahead and get started. There may be a few people trickling in, but there's some housekeeping things, so hopefully they will be able to join us by the time we get to our content. So, welcome everyone. We're here today to talk about parking changes coming to Roosevelt in advance of the light rail station opening this fall with a specific focus on the restricted parking zone or RPZ expansion. Next slide. This is the mission, vision, and core values of our department, the Seattle Department of Transportation. We view our role in parking and curb space management as critical to delivering a high-quality transportation system for everyone who travels through or lives in Seattle. Can go to the next slide. All right, so first of all, some tips on using WebEx. At this point, if you're having any technical issues, please use the chat function and choose all panelists so that we see it. At this time, please don't use the chat for anything else. We will have a dedicated Q and A towards the end, and we don't want your questions to get lost between now and then. So, any technical issues in the chat now, hold other things till later. And just to note, this meeting is being recorded. Next slide. All right, so the hearing, the virtual hearing comment process. If you would like to make a verbal comment, please use the link that we'll put in the chat that Jared just put in the chat to sign up to make a comment. And when, once we get there, please only use one device, you'll be muted. And if you think you might want to speak, use that link now to sign up because we're closing the form at 6:30 PM. We're also able to take written comments still at North Gate Link Parking at seattle.gov. Next slide. Okay, so we're starting with welcome and introductions, and then I will give a presentation. And then we'll move on to the public comment period, which is sort of the formal portion where everybody has two minutes to speak. And we don't respond, and then we'll go to a more informal Q and A where we can take any remaining questions, and we hope to wrap up by about 7:30. So, to start with introductions, I'll introduce myself. My name is Becky Edmonds. I work for the Seattle Department of Transportation, and I'm managing the process for updating curb space regulations around all of the upcoming light rail stations. So, we'll go ahead and have all of the people who are here as panelists introduce themselves. And I'll call on you. I'll start with Jared.
Hi, my name is Jared. I also work for the Seattle Department of Transportation with the Curb Space team, and I am here to help facilitate the meeting tonight.
How about Amelia?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amelia. I also work with the Curb Space team at SDOT, and I'll be helping with any technical issues that arise during the meeting tonight.
Hey, Mike?
Hi there. My name is Mike Esti. I'm the manager of curbside management for the Seattle Department of Transportation.
Margot?
Hi, I'm Margot Polly. I'm working the curbside management section as well, and I'm here to help answer questions.
Ruth?
Hi, I'm Ruth Harper, also in the curbside management team, and I'm here to answer questions and especially RPZ questions.
All right, let's go to Ben.
Sure. Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Ben Smith from SDOT. I'm not in the curbside management team. I'm on one of our transit teams, and I'm helping coordinate SDOT's response to get ready for the three new link stations opening later this year. Thanks.
Daryl?
Hi, everyone. My name is Daryl Bulmer. I'm the community outreach lead for many major projects in this area, including the work on Fiftyth Avenue Northeast and a few minor projects on Roosevelt and the Rapid Ride J Line. So, I'm here to just discuss any project-related questions if they come up.
And let's go to Kristen.
Hi, I'm Kristen Hoffman. I'm with Sound Transit of the Light Rail Development Manager for North Gate Link.
And Marnie?
Hi, I'm Marnie Heffron. I am a consultant to both SDOT and Sound Transit, collecting parking information and performing baseline parking studies that are required by Sound Transit as part of its Record of Decision.
All right, thank you all. I think everyone from the panels. So with that, we'll move into the presentation. So, can we go to the next slide? All right, so this is where we are in our process. We released a draft proposal for parking changes in Roosevelt. We released that on April 7. We've been taking comments since then. And today, we're at the public hearing phase. We will continue taking comments through May 15, and then hope to announce a final plan based on a combination of our proposal and comments we receive around the end of May or early June. Next slide. So, why are we here? As Marnie mentioned, something called the Record of Decision, and this is commitment that Sound Transit made to prevent what we call hide-and-ride parking around light rail. So, that's preventing people from driving into the neighborhood and parking on neighborhood streets to access the light rail station. This also helps ease parking congestion in the neighborhood, and for us on the SDOT side in curbside management, we were trying to balance the needs of many different users of our public streets, and we recognize that curb space is a limited public resource. So, we're using a variety of management tools to use the curb in the best way possible. Slide. So, this is the overall map of the neighborhood that we're proposing. You can see that there's a real mixture of there's some paid parking, some time limits, and the bulk of the proposal is to expand restricted parking zone 19, which is the orange and the orange dotted lines. Can go to the next slide. So, why expand RPZ 19 specifically? Like I said, Sound Transit and SDOT are committed to mitigating the impacts from the light rail station, and RPZs specifically are designed to prevent commuters and other long-term parkers from parking on neighborhood streets and from driving around looking for parking and causing a lot of congestion in that way. So, next slide. So, this is a map that just hones in on the RPZ portion that we're proposing. So, you can see we're really filling in a lot of the northwest corner and north in the neighborhood, or it has been unrestricted for many years. Next slide. So, how does it work? You've seen, you've likely, if you're a visitor, or if you work in this neighborhood or you live there, you've seen some 19 signs. They limit long-term parking. They do allow short-term parking for visitors. So, you can park for up to two hours if you don't have a permit, and then they prioritize residential parking access. So, residents are able to get permits to park for longer than two hours during these times, which is 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Next slide. Some important reminders about how the RPZ program works. They, we don't differentiate between types of residents. So, it doesn't matter if you own your home or rent, or if you live in a multifamily building or single-family house. RPZs also don't guarantee you a spot, so you might not be able to park right in front of your house, but the goal is to create a certain amount of turnover so that there is somewhere you might be able to find a parking spot in the neighborhood. Next slide. So, how permits work? Each household is eligible for up to four decal permits. These permits are the ones that you get to go in your car that you own that's registered at your address. And you could also get one guest permit per household, which is a hang tag that you can give to someone who's visiting your house. Or, for example, if you have a plumber coming over, they can use it to park on the street. The permit costs $65 for a two-year cycle. One thing to note about that is that the cycles don't prorate, so there's a specific time when this zone renews. And if you get your permit in the middle of that, which many people will this time, you'll pay $65, and then you'll pay it again the next time it renews. Another thing to note is that if you are east of Roosevelt Way and south of 65th, your first permit is $16 because the University of Washington pays for part of it. We also do have an income-eligible permit available that costs $10 per cycle, and yeah, we can talk more about that if there are any questions. On this map, that blue area shows where the first permit is $16 because of that University of Washington subsidy. Next slide. So, like I said, we have been taking feedback already since the beginning of the month. We've gotten about 280 survey responses, as well as some emails and phone calls. And these are just some of the themes that we've started to hear. Main one, I would say, the most common one is that we want the RPZ to be expanded further, specifically further north and further east. There was also a specific request we heard to add RPZ on the north side of 61st between Roosevelt and 12th. That was a change that was made a few years ago to add parking there, and people would like to see it restricted in some way. Got a few requests for load zones, and then some requests related to safety concerns and people parking too close to corners and things like that. And that's out of a lot of, a lot of comments. We saw that on the survey so far, about 40% of people said they just overall support the proposal as is. And then another 20% of respondents or so said they would support it if it were expanded. So, we're at about 60% approval in general. Next slide. All right. Now, we'll move into the public comment phase, and we will call up to three names at a time, so you can be ready to speak. When it's your turn, you'll be unmuted. Again, we're recording this meeting. And request that you please state your name clearly for the record. So, we have it. And you'll have two minutes. And one final reminder to please be respectful. And we'll go to the next slide to pull up the overall map again while people comment. All right, I'll turn it over to Jared.
Okay, thanks, Becky. So, we have first, and perhaps the only one who wants to give a public comment, and before we move on to Q and A, John Bullard, I am going to unmute you here in just a second and let you give your comment. Okay, go ahead, John. You're unmuted.
Great, thanks, Jared. And thanks to the entire team for taking time tonight to, you know, be with us, engage with the community. Really appreciate that. Really excited for the plan that you've put together here. I think you guys are really thinking about the right things, and we're really excited for the light rail to come in. We're actually residents on northeast 61st Street, and I just wanted to echo some of the feedback that it would be great to consider expanding RPZ on the north side of northeast 61st. It's already fairly congested on that side of the street, and with the light rail coming in, I expect that's only going to increase. Thanks for your consideration.
So. I think that's it for public comment, Becky. Wait, oh. We had another sign up. Okay.
Hi.
David Gross, I'm going to unmute you here in just a second, and you are unmuted, and we are ready to hear from you.
Can you hear me?
Dan?
Somehow, I've lost the whole the whole feed, so I guess alls you can do is hear me. But anyway, yes, I live on Seventeenth Avenue Northeast, just north of 70th. So, on your map that you've been showing on this on this program, we're basically the one and only green block. And I think our concern, I've spoken to a number of our neighbors, and most of us feel the same way. The concern is that we'll be the parking block once all of the other blocks between us and the light rail stop are restricted, they'll find, you know, the commuters and the people going to the airport will find our block as the free place to park, and it's certainly within walking distance. We, we experienced that because Roosevelt High School is just a block away from this station, and certainly the Roosevelt High School kids have no problem walking from our block to their high school. So, I think it's a big concern for us that expanding the parking zone at the same time that light rail is arriving is just going to make our block the target for people to access free parking and sort of overwhelm our neighborhood. So, I hope that you will give that some consideration and expand the RPZ onto our block and perhaps a block north of us. I think 75th seems like a logical cutoff heading north, because it's such a busy street that people aren't likely to consider parking north of 75th. So, I guess that's my comment. If you guys have some studies that suggest that people aren't going to walk that far to, from our block to the station, I'm interested in hearing about it. But I think that's unlikely. I think we're going to be the place that people will find to park. Thanks.
Thanks, David. So, I'm just going to pause for a minute, and if, if there's anybody else out there who would like to make a public comment before we move to the Q and A, just go ahead and put it, put your name in the chat. I'll call on you.
This is Ruth Harper making an informal comment, since I've been to many, many RPZ hearings, and so don't be shy. If you think you want to say something, even if you haven't prepared a comment, just put your name in the chat, and we'll call on you, but no pressure.
Okay. Dan, Dan would like to make a comment, so Dan Goldgeyer, hopefully I didn't mispronounce that too bad. I'm going to unmute you, and we are ready to hear from you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. First off, thank you for all the hard work you guys have done with this. I know I've been in communication with Becky about some, a couple of issues. I live in the top-left quadrant up on 72nd Street, and most of my neighbors are overwhelmingly in support of this. The one concern we do have is that the green strip that is, I guess, adjacent to the the highway, I guess, on Eighth Avenue and not, of course, abutting the houses. That could quickly become a place for ride and hide-and-ride people, especially, and some other, other folks who, who may just want to keep their cars there for longer than necessary. I would just, once again, reiterate, maybe taking another look at that strip to include that in the RPZ, but overwhelmingly, my neighbors are very supportive of this, and because we know that there's a lot of new housing coming online, and then with the light rail is going to attract a lot of great, a lot of folks to ride, which is, which is a great thing. That's just the one concern I have, and, and thank you for your time. I appreciate it, and like I said, my neighbor's overwhelmingly supportive of, of most of this.
Awesome. Thank you, Dan. Okay, we have another request from Susan Williams, Judge, and I will unmute you right now, and we are ready to hear from you.
Hi, thanks so much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. I'm not a tech person, but thanks very much for having this. I guess my concern, and it falls into what other people have been saying, is that so recently, we became this light rail hub. We have over 1,000 people in apartments around us. And my question is, why didn't they make a parking garage that the city could have gained money on rather than selling it to a developer to have even more apartments? Because my understanding is that all those people in apartments can get the RPZ sticker as well. So, you know, as far as expanding the RPZ zone, I think that that would be a very fair thing to do. So, that's my questions.
Thanks, Susan. Okay, Becky, I'm not seeing any other chat comments.
All right, then we can move into the Q and A. I think the next slide. Oh, yeah. So, just a reminder about the next steps. Like I said earlier, we'll be making a final plan at the end of May, early June, and then we'll be in touch with people about how to get permits, and then be installing throughout the summer and fall, and the station will open October 2nd. Next slide. All right. So, we'll go into the Q and A now, and I think we can start with answering Susan's question, and I would like to hand this over to Mike Esti if you would like to speak to Susan's questions.
Sure, I'd be happy to. And Susan, if I, you know, misstated or you want to reiterate, please feel free to let me know. You were essentially, I think, asking about why the city doesn't build parking garages or park and rides adjacent to light rail stations. It's been a long time city policy actually not to build structured parking adjacent to light rail stations during both the planning and the construction process. The idea is, we don't really want people to drive into some of these dense parts of the city to then basically commute in and park and then get on light rail. We want folks to take transit to bike and to walk. The concern is that would otherwise congest these parts of the city, where again, we've installed light rail to start to try to address some of the congestion issues. The other is, when we think about how to use some of these parcels, you know, developing affordable housing adjacent to light rail stations is kind of where we want to be. Hopefully, a lot of those aren't built with a ton of parking. We've actually eliminated any kind of parking minimums adjacent to light rail stations and in areas where there's frequent transit. And the idea is, if you're building housing adjacent to light rail, you shouldn't have to build too much parking, and that makes the housing a little bit more affordable. So, those are some of the reasons why, you know, policymakers, elected officials for a long time have, have been pretty clear that we don't, don't want to don't want to build structured parking adjacent to light rail.
Thanks for that information. That's very helpful. I guess the second part of the question is, you know, our block is pretty crammed right now with cars, and we do have a lot of people who have moved into the area into new developments. And so, are those people, can they get an RPZ as well, right?
Yeah, so as I had said earlier, the RPZ is designed to prevent parking congestion and traffic congestion due to the demand generator, which is the light rail station. But we don't differentiate between types of residents or the type of building residents live in. So, there might still be some crowded parking out there as, as more and more people come into the neighborhood. I know that some people do bring cars into the neighborhood. Some households have a couple cars. Things like that do cause it to be a little crowded, but we want to make sure that it's not additionally crowded from people driving in to use the transit from other neighborhoods.
Thank you.
All right. We can now move to any additional questions people have. If you could type your question into the chat, choosing all panelists. Jared will be reading through those, and then we will address them. We can stay until 8:00 PM if needed. I'm not anticipating that we will be here that long. Hopefully, people can go out and enjoy a little bit of the sun that's left in the sky, but feel free to ask any questions now.
Okay, so David has a question. First, he'd like to thank our time and effort on this. Thank you as well, David, for showing up. What are your thoughts on the likelihood of people parking on Seventeenth or Eighteenth Northeast, north of 70th?
So, when we started developing this proposal, we focused initially on within a quarter mile of the station. We do recognize, and we are doing a baseline study out to about a half a mile from the station. So, I believe that area is sort of more than a quarter, but less than half a mile. I think there is evidence that people may well park there and go to light rail, and it sounds, and, and we're hearing this comment a lot, that there is this concern, and there's an interest in adding that area to the RPZ, and that's certainly something we will strongly take into consideration as we update the proposal. So, and so that's one option, is that we, we may very well add it to our final plan before things go in. If that doesn't happen, if there are additional blocks that would like to join the RPZ after this initial installation, that's also possible. So, it is possible to expand the RPZs incrementally, and we get requests from individual blocks to add to the RPZ once it's gone in. So, if it's sort of, if we put something in, and then it looks like people are parking and walking further, we have ways that we can address that over time as we're monitoring the situation. I also saw a question, is the guest permit $65 as well? This is a little bit complicated because of the way our permitting system works. The guest permit is $65 if it's your only permit. You purchase a decal permit and a guest permit, the guest permit is $30.
Thanks, Becky. I don't have any other, if there are any other questions, please put them in the chat to your all-panelist option. Give it another minute.
I see another question in the chat. Is it possible to extend RPZ to the north side of 61st? And it says between 61st and 12th. Not sure if that means between Roosevelt and 12th, where you can see at the bottom of the map, there is a green line there, and yes, we can expand the RPZ there. This was made unrestricted parking around the time that the bike lane went in on Roosevelt. And it, and so it was just put in as unrestricted at that time, and I think we'll certainly, again, strongly consider putting that in as, as an RPZ. It, it probably makes a lot of sense.
Not seeing any additional questions. Let's give another minute or so. Okay, we have a question here from Peter Reed. Along 66 between 12th and 15th, have you considered making this time-limited versus RPZ to better support existing businesses and those in the new apartments in the area?
I think that, yeah, that's an interesting question. And so, yeah, something we can look at again. I think that area is changing a lot. And so, yeah, something we can look at again. I think that area is changing a lot, so we tend to base our decisions about what goes at the curb on what the ground floor use is. And so we're trying to, you know, support ground floor businesses, but as the land use changes, we want to be responsive to that. So possibly it could be time limits. It could also end up eventually maybe being paid parking to support the business district.
Thanks, Peter. Any other questions? Hearing none.
Thank you, Jared. And thank you all for coming and commenting and asking questions. And Ruth, if we could go next couple slides. There's a few links to go to, to follow for updates. If you submitted comments through the survey or an email, we will also email you and send out another mailing with final information and information about how to get your permit. And you can also find some updates about Sound Transit changes and changes coming to our bus network with King County Metro with these links. And can go to the next slide. And any further questions can come to me. This is the, the email we're using for this project, which is northgatelinkparking@seattle.gov, or you can give me a phone call too. And that is in the chat. And with that, I think we can call it a night.
Yeah, I'm gonna just leave it up for a minute, so folks can have a second to grab the links, and then I will close the meeting up.